Council meeting, Councilmember Rick LaLance has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, if you'll bow with me. Lord, as always, we thank you for all the blessings in our lives and we're sorry for all the things that we take for granted. Lord, we hope that you'll be with us tonight as we make decisions for the city. We hope that you'll be with our employees, our police and fire, and be with all the citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get going, I want to quickly say, I wanted to thank staff. We had a event this morning at, out on Murfreesboro Road. I don't, I didn't even know where Murfreesboro Road was, out on Woodbury Highway. And so, we did an event for Feed America First. And we had, the Parks and Rec staff was there, the police staff was there, fire department was there. And so, we delivered or loaded fifty thousand pounds of food that fed all, people all over the mid-state. So, I want to thank all the staff who came out and helped with that. It was, it was a really good event. I don't have any other ceremonial items, and have the consent agenda that's in front of you.
Do we need to amend? Item?
Item C. Yes, sir. Mr. Tyndall's laid out a revised letter that makes it clear that the McDonald, McDonald's can farm the property for the next growing season, so they'd be able to grow through July thirtieth. And then after that, depending on whether or not we need to start construction on West Park, we could either terminate the lease at that point, or give them an opportunity to farm one more season.
Okay. Is, I'm sorry.
Is, is there any chance that we would need the property before?
Doubtful.
The next growing season was completed, or?
We've got a process that we're gonna have a workshop with the City Council and the Parks and Recreation Commission to begin visioning for what the park should include. Then we'll have some community input sessions, perhaps. And then, once that community input's received, then the architects and engineers are gonna need to design the park. So, it'll be something, I doubt.
July thirtieth of next year is kinda unrealistic for us to think we're gonna be having construction out there.
Yes, sir.
Is there a way, not to get off of this, this subject, but, I mean, I think as a council, we, I'm not saying that we know exactly what needs to go there, but we all know that there are ball fields and soccer fields and, but is there a way that, that we help speed that process along, that we don't end up, you know, eighteen months from now? I mean, we're really looking three years if we said that, from the time we purchased the property. Are we thinking three years before we could cut a ribbon and have kids playing on the field?
I'd like to think construct, depending on what we include, I think Barfield Crescent took about a year to construct. And then if we looked at, you know, six months or so to plan and a couple of months to design, so, it'd probably be about two years.
Okay.
But, that, these are the kinds of questions that we want to dig into when we have our workshop.
Okay.
Two's acceptable, three's not.
Yeah, well, sooner than later would be the, the workshop, we can title the workshop Sooner Than Later.
Yeah, we, I think we had a date, but one council member was unavailable, so you may need to look, look at some other days.
So, you've got the consent agenda in front of you with the item amended.
I'll move for approval as item C is amended.
Second.
Ms. Wright.
Who is the second?
Mr. LaLance and Mr. Young with the second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into second readings. We'll consider for passage on second reading and final reading ordinance sixteen oh fifty-six, amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter twenty-one, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, creating section twenty-one dash six for unruly gatherings.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion to second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance sixteen oh fifty-eight, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter twenty-one, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, section twenty-one dash five point three and twenty-eight streets and sidewalks, section twenty-eight nine regarding unlawful solicitations.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to the second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move into new business. In pursuant to Resolution sixteen R P H forty-nine point one, adopted by the City Council on October thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider, one, the adoption of a plan of services for an annexation of approximately two hundred and thirty-six point eight acres, and, two, zoning of approximately two hundred and twenty-seven point seven acres located along South Rutherford Boulevard, which had been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, two thousand and sixteen dash five fifteen, and two thousand and sixteen dash four forty-six. Notice of the said public hearing was published in October thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley.
Good evening, excuse me. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor McFarland, and members of council. If you bear with me, my voice is a little bit shot tonight. I think one word can explain that, it's called daycare. Our first item tonight is with regards to the... Sure.
Oh, nice. They practiced for an hour this afternoon.
That's a lot of games of wiffle ball in the backyard of my brother.
I hope they got that on camera.
The first item is with regards to the annexation of the property, I know you're all familiar with, that FedEx would like to build its distribution center, its hub, on South Rutherford Boulevard. It's the property colored in blue. Total air area included is two hundred and thirty-six point eight acres, and that's about to change a little bit, and I'll go over that with you in just a moment. But, with respect to the annexation, the annexation plan of services is in your agenda packets, and it shows that we can provide services to the subject property once annexed. The properties that are in the orange color were included as additional study area, in the hopes that the owners of those properties would, in the hopes that the owners of those properties would submit annexation consents, because they were essentially, kind of, an alcove of those properties, so, almost surrounded by this property. One is sliver owned by James Husky. Two is CSX right-of-way here. And the third one is the parcel, this triangular-shaped parcel here, never received annexation petitions or consent from the property owner to annex those properties. The planning commission went ahead and recommended all those parcels in the event that we received those consents before the City Council public hearing. However, we did not receive those consents. So, those three parcels must be removed, because we do not have the written permission of the property owner to annex those properties. The subject property itself, there is a sliver of the CSX right-of-way that is on the subject property, but that property, that CSX right-of-way that's on the subject property has not been included in this annexation. So, by eliminating the CSX right-of-way, even the part that's on the subject property, we are not creating any islands. And so, we can easily leave those out and do nothing else. The property in blue, we included the right-of-way in front of that property. So, there are two options that you have, and I've made two maps that I'll show you on the screen. The first one is to, and, and because the study area is changing, you will have to vote separately to amend both the plan of services and the annexation petition, because the study area is different from what was advertised. So, on this first map, you'll see both the Husky property and the CSX right-of-way are out, because there's, because we have no consents for those properties. And the Dairy Berry property, which is this triangle, has been left out, as well as the right-of-way in front of the Dairy Berry property. Now, at the planning commission public hearing, Mr. Smotherman brought up the possibility of annexing the right-of-way in front of the Dairy Berry property and leaving a ten-foot strip, so that we could take in as much of the right-of-way as possible. So, I've, I've made a map for you with that option as well. So, you see, if we can put the map back up on the screen, please. See, here's the first option, and the second option, adding that right-of-way with the ten-foot strip. Now, I spoke with our engineering department before the meeting, and our engineering department is neutral on this. Whether or not we include that right-of-way or don't include that right-of-way, it's, it's such a small area that the engineering staff is not, does not think that there would be any negative consequences of leaving that area out completely. They don't have anything against adding that in with the ten-foot strip either. So, either way you decide to go, our engineering department is, is fine with that. Of course, if you decide to annex the property. So, with, with that being said, oh, the, the acreage of the property would go down to two hundred and twenty-six point one acres by subtracting those three parcels. The planning commission did conduct a public hearing on this matter on October fifth, and recommended unanimously the annexation of this property. One thing that I did want to mention that I think is important, Commissioner Young, or Councilman Young and Councilman Smotherman, at the, we're at the planning commission meeting yesterday, and many of you might also know that we approved the site plan for FedEx, the planning commission did, at yesterday's planning commission meeting. But, I just wanted to let you know that that was approved contingent upon the annexation and the zoning being approved. So, in other words, if the annexation and the zoning are not approved, the site plan and the preliminary plat for the property are not approved. So, just because the planning commission took that action, in the event the City Council does not approve the annexation or the zoning, those approvals by the planning commission are not valid. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the, the annexation. Mr. Ives, who has a better voice than I do right now, can provide any additional guidance on the, on, on how we need to proceed with respect to modifying the, the study area for the annexation.
Any questions?
I think just for clarification's sake, the reason I, so, he mentioned me in the request, and, and the reason I requested that roadway extension except for that ten-foot area was so that we would have consistent services from Church Street all the way to the city limits in there. If we don't, I'm afraid you could wind up in a situation where you might pull somebody over and them say, "I'm not in the city of Murfreesboro anymore." So, I, I don't know if that would ever be a problem, or if there were an accident there, that the city wouldn't work it, because it was, I just think if we have the consistency of the roadway, I think that increases the opportunities for not having to face litigation maybe down the road.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we want to conduct a public hearing on the plan of services for an annexa, and annexation of approximately two hundred and thirty-six point eight acres located along South Rutherford Boulevard. Whenever we conduct a public hearing, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll state your name, your address, if you'll keep all of your comments directed towards the council, if you have any questions, we'll get those questions answered at the end of the public hearing. If you're representing a group, typically ask that you'll keep the comments to five minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of yourself, if you'll keep the comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to the plan of services or the annexation, please come to the public hearing, or please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for adoption Resolution sixteen R P S forty-nine to adopt a plan of services for approximately two hundred and thirty-six point eight acres along South Rutherford Boulevard, Thomas Hoover, Elizabeth Clark, et al., applicants, two thousand and sixteen dash five fifteen.
Mayor, it would be appropriate to have a motion to amend, to delete the two, the railroad and the Husky Trust parcel, and also some or all of the triangle, before we have actually passed the, approved the plan of services, assuming that that's what happens, actually before you consider final vote on the plan of services and the annexation. It'd be, would be to remove them from both from the, from discussion in the plan of services and also from the annexation petition.
So moved. Second.
Motion to the second, as amended.
Excuse me, Mr.?
So, what, which amendment are we?
Are you moving, i- is this to remove everything except ten-foot of the right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay.
So, removing, moving everything except for the right-of-way?
The road.
Yeah, I think.
The ten-foot strip that Eddie had suggested.
The map that, that, if we could put the map on the screen.
That the two properties would be removed.
Yes.
The Dairy Berry property and the Husky property would be removed, but?
And the, and the CSX.
The CSX property, but the, the strip would be included.
So, the, the map that we have on the map before, on the screen before us?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Is it clear, is it clear enough, Ms. Ives?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Ms. Wright, you'll call the row.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for adoption, excuse me, Mr. Blomley, we'll turn it over to you.
I think we need to?
This amendment was to, I mean, this, unless I missed something, this motion was to amend the plan of services and the?
So, we just voted, we just voted on the amendment, so we'll now need to vote on the?
So, now we're prepared to?
And the annexation as amended.
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to the second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Blomley.
Was that the, was that B? We still need to vote on C?
We've already, we've already done the plan of services.
This will be the public hearing for zoning.
Okay. All right.
Right?
An annexed yet, right?
Yeah, I, I think that the motion, the motion was, when I understood the motion to be, and, Mr. Ives can chime in if we need a separate one, was to adopt the plan of services and the annexation.
We did, instead of doing those independently, we did one motion for the plan of services and the annexation. If you would rather us do one for the plan of services and one for the annexation, we'll need, okay, so we need to?
That would be preferable.
Okay. We'll need to consider for adoption Resolution sixteen R eight, eight forty-nine to annex approximately two hundred and thirty-six point eight acres along South Rutherford Boulevard, and incorporate the same with the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Thomas Hoover, Elizabeth Clark, applicants, two thousand and two, sixteen dash five fifteen. This is for the annexation.
Move for annexation.
The corrected, the corrected amended?
Correct.
Amount, which is twenty, two hundred and twenty-six point one, is that what you're?
That's correct.
Okay.
As amended. Motion?
So moved.
The second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the row.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Blomley will now consider the, the zoning.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. The subject property is what we just considered, and what I'll do is I'll put the map on that resembles the study area that you just approved for annexation. So, I've also updated the, the zoning exhibit as well, that shows the Dairy Berry property taken out, and, but leaves the, the right-of-way and the ten-foot strip. The applicants are requesting a zoning classification of CH simultaneous with annexation. The CH zone is the least intense zoning district that permits their proposed use. Their proposed use as a FedEx distribution center is classified in the zoning ordinance as warehousing and transporting. And so, the commercial highway zone is an appropriate zone for that particular use, per the zoning ordinance. As I mentioned, the planning commission did consider a site plan, but that is contingent upon the, the annexation and the zoning of the subject property. The subject property comprises over two hundred acres, and it is the intention of the applicants to construct a, a large FedEx distribution center. And Ms. Cherie Akers with Stantec, representing the developer, is here and has a brief PowerPoint presentation that she would like to give you. I'll be happy to answer any questions, either before or after the public hearing. The planning commission did unanimously recommend to, recommend approval of this item at its October fifth meeting.
Good evening, Cherie Akers with Stantec, and I'm representing FedEx. I'll try to be brief, not reiterate anything that Matthew's already said, but essentially, as he indicated, FedEx is looking to expand their operations here in Murfreesboro. We have an existing facility nearby, and they're looking to expand due to the increased volume and package volume that is taking place as we grow here in middle Tennessee. As he's indicated, the site is a little over two hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventeen acres, sorry, and it's located off of South Rutherford Boulevard, just west of Rutherford and Broad Street. And, again, we are requesting a rezoning from medium residential to commercial highway. And as he's indicated, it is a less intense of some of the other adjacent uses that are zoned industrial. And the RM current designation is really no longer appropriate, given a lot of the other industrial uses and warehousing that's taking place in the area. As he's indicated, we did have site plan approval yesterday, and it was approved pending this approval. And I'll share with you that site plan here in just a few minutes. Again, it's a FedEx distribution center. It's approximately nine hundred, little over nine hundred and forty-seven thousand square feet. We talked about the existing zoning in the area, the Husky Trust to the north. The south, we do have some residential properties located to the south on some large lands, and there's some adjacent vacant land and industrial to the west. This is quite an investment for FedEx here in Murfreesboro. It's a hundred and eighty-nine million dollar investment for them. Within the first two years, they'll add an additional two hundred and thirty employees. Forty-one of them will be full-time, hundred and eighty-nine of them are part-time. In addition, they'll have almost over three hundred independent drivers that will also be contract employees of FedEx. On the screen here is the site plan that we had preliminarily approved yesterday pending this zoning. As you can see, we have approximately three access points along South Rutherford Boulevard. The main access point is for truck and trailer traffic and the delivery vans. And then, there is a second entrance further east that is for employee parking only. And then, to further east, you'll see a right-of-way, a sixty-foot dedication that we are dedicating to the city in order to have access to the adjacent properties and have more through traffic in the future as these properties begin to develop. We do have a number, a number of site constraints. The green areas located on the east are the floodplain. We are staying out of the floodplain, so most of our development is centered towards the western portion of the property. In addition, you'll see the red located further to the west near the railroad. That is a cedar glade that we are required to preserve, so we are not proposing any development in that area. And this is a landscape plan that we also got approved. As you can see, we are maintaining a great deal of native vegetation that we will continue to preserve, and especially along Lidle Creek and that area. If you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but that's just sort of a brief demonstration project. I did want to add, we did conduct a, last time during the planning commission, we conducted a neighborhood meeting with the neighborhoods. And there was some concern about traffic, but we've submitted a traffic report as part of the site plan approval, and we have worked out, and we're offering a number of road improvements to accommodate our traffic. And if you have any specific questions about that, we can bring RPM up here to answer those questions.
I've got a question about that.
Okay.
I had, you guys had given me some numbers regarding the traffic counts on Rutherford Boulevard. We never did look at any counts on Church, where a lot of your traffic will be going to. Did you guys, do any, have those same kind of numbers, like the capacity of Church Street, and where we are today, and where you guys, how much you guys would add?
Okay. We don't have those numbers in that exact same format as we provided on Rutherford, but what we did is, for all the streets we looked at, which included South Church, Rutherford Boulevard, and Broad, as well as Joe B. Jackson, we, we did traffic counts, and particularly peak time traffic counts, and then analyzed the capacities of each of the intersections along those roadways, and identified the impact of the project, developed recommendations to mitigate those impacts. And, so, for instance, at Church Street, we're making a recommendation to provide, or to modify the traffic signal, to provide a right-turn overlap phase for northbound traffic, which will actually improve the level of service at that intersection from what is level of service E to level of service C. So, it really will end up being quite an improvement at that intersection.
How about the, the, going the other way, you know, that's, that's probably the best way coming in. So, what about, you know, going?
It's going east.
Going west on Rutherford, the traffic that way, and then coming north, south on Church Street, going towards the interstate, and then, you know, that'd be heading south, north of the intersection and south of the intersection.
Right.
Be kind of the critical place.
Yeah, so, so for instance, we analyzed all the intersections from, including the interchange ramps, all the interchange ramps, up to Rutherford Boulevard on Church Street. And then, we do anticipate that we'll have, as you mentioned, traffic coming from the, from the north on, on Church Street, and turning into the, to, into Rutherford Boulevard to access the site. And once again, you know, we go through a, a process of analyzing the capacity of those intersections and looking at existing conditions, and then adding in the projected traffic and analyzing the projected conditions. And then, our goal is to try, try to make those projected conditions either as good or better than existing conditions. And with that, with that intersection, with the improvements recommended, we are making that intersection operate better than it does currently.
I guess that brings me to two questions. One, why wouldn't we have already done that already? And, two, why, why, is it, if a, if a roadway is kind of an F roadway, does that mean it's already at its capacity or more? I mean, is that the same thing?
Yes, I mean, it basically means that it's, that it's at gridlock.
Yeah, so if we know that Church Street is already an F?
Right.
Then that means it's already at capacity, and so, everything we kind of add in that immediate vicinity is gonna just, there's hardly any way to shape that to be where it's better, right? I mean, I?
Yeah. I mean, it's a little more complicated than that, but that's, that's basically accurate. I mean, for instance, if your signal timing at an intersection is off, and you've got some really heavy traffic on one approach, that actually can make that intersection operated F. And if you can adjust your signal timing to make it more efficient, you can bring that in, in, in better operations. Now, the signal timing out there, for the way the signal is phased and the equipment that's out there, you know, it's, it's operating at a, I mean, the, the signal timings are appropriate for that. What we're doing is, is adding some, an additional signal. What we're doing is, is adding some additional signal head with some equipment that will enable that intersection to operate a lot more efficiently. And that's really how we're achieving the level of service improvement.
What's the construction timeline on this? How long is it going to take to build the traffic?
The first phase, which is roughly over 747,000 square feet, it is about a five-year build-out for that phase. So 2019 is when we hope to construct, begin construction. And then the first phase will end around 2026.
This ain't going to happen overnight.
The 80s.
Mayor, if I may, Mr. Murphy, would you give your name and company and address for our record please?
Sorry about that. I'm Bob Murphy, traffic engineer with RPM Transportation Consultants.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we need to conduct a public hearing to consider zoning approximately 227.7 acres located along South Rutherford Boulevard, its highway commercial CH district simultaneous with annexation FedEx ground applicant 2016-446. We can have discussion after the public hearing as well. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Okay. Scene nine will close the public hearing and will consider for passage on first reading ordinance 160Z49, a zoning area along South Rutherford Boulevard, its highway commercial CH district simultaneous with annexation 2016-4, excuse me, 2016-446.
I know we discussed the traffic and all, but I really do think that the one thing that we really need to make sure we mention is the fact that this project is supposed to create approximately 197 jobs. So hopefully, good-paying jobs, most of them will be full-time, so.
Microphone.
I'm done talking. I'm done talking.
We want to keep it in the record, Eddie.
Is that on the record, Eddie?
That was off the record. That was a little private conversation.
I've got a quick question, Mr. Blomley. This is commercial highway, Husky and Southern Container, those are, they're zoning?
I believe they are heavy, heavy industrial.
Okay. So explain to me just the difference between two heavy industrial uses and then commercial highway?
The heavy industrial zone allows a greater variety of uses. So I believe with both Husky and Southern Container, there's some element of manufacturing. Now, I'm not entirely familiar with both of their operations, so I can't tell you whether they would be allowed in light industrial as well, but that industrial zoning classification does allow that element of manufacturing. With the commercial highway zone, that manufacturing element is not permitted. So the fact that their entire operation is just warehousing and transporting, i.e. trucking, it's, the, the use is deemed to be less intense than one with a manufacturing component that might also have warehousing and trucking. With their use, with the exception of the tractor-trailers, is all contained inside a building. The only element of storage outside is of the tractor-trailers. And so that's kind of an explanation of why it's permitted in commercial highway as opposed to requiring an industrial zoning classification for this property. And when we were advising them, it was our advice to them to go with the least intense zoning classification that would permit their use.
My second question is, I know we don't, we don't see site plan, but they're, they're going through phase one approval now, correct?
They're going through approval of both phase one and phase two. So phase one, they're, that's what their site plan was yesterday, was for the whole development. So they're looking to phase their construction. Phase one would be permitted now if their rezoning is granted. Phase two would be permitted later, so it would be, you know, with, with the current vesting laws, they would not, unless they change something voluntarily, they would not be required to go back to the planning commission. And Mr. Ives can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the way I understand the current vesting laws. They would, however, have to go through the permitting review before phase two was, was permitted. One thing that I would note with respect to the site plan approval yesterday was that the traffic study, only the phase, only phase one of the traffic study was approved. So when they come back for permits for phase two, because that's a certain number of years out in the future and traffic conditions would be expected to be different in 2026 or 2027 than they are right now, they will be required to submit a separate traffic study for evaluation and review and approval by the city engineer before they're allowed to get building permits for phase two.
So if we've got, you know, 10 years from now, if we see where there's improvements that need to be made, phase two would not necessarily be able to get a permit if that trap, unless we review that traffic study?
That's correct. The, and there may be entirely new improvements that would be recommended by the phase-two traffic study. And those improvements would be evaluated by our city engineer at that time.
Mr. Lance, I think you have a question.
I guess one thing I'll ask, if you, if you just, for what our purposes are, we're annexing it and we're giving the entire property commercial highway zoning. Is there anything, I mean, it can, if, if things do change, they build out off the road, is there anything that could happen out here on the perimeter, I mean, the road, the perimeter of the property on the roadside? I mean, could they sell off strips of the land up here and have strip malls along here, restaurants, et cetera?
I guess that's always a possibility. I don't think there would be anything that would preclude that from happening. I will say that with.
PCD would preclude that, right? Right? I mean, you know.
A PCD would, would nail down the use, would nail down the layout, and any substantial deviation to that PCD would require to go back to, to the city council and the planning commission.
Why would we, why, why did staff not discuss that with them?
Um.
It's an awful big piece of property just to be us bulk zoning.
It, it is. I, you know, I know that, you know, we've been attempting to steer applicants in the direction of bulk zoning unless a plan development is necessary. And in this case, it was our opinion that a commercial highway zone would be inappropriate or would, would be appropriate guidance to give them rather than a plan development. And, you know, when an applicant takes a request for straight zoning to the planning commission and the city council, much like with the Springfield Luxury Apartments on Manson Pike, sometimes, there are times when the planning commission and the city council might say, we don't feel comfortable with bulk zoning, but we feel comfortable with the plan development. But it's just.
Yeah, I mean, I, look, I think everybody, I shouldn't speak for everybody, but you know, everybody, I think FedEx is a great name and, and great company and we love to have them in Murfreesboro. You know, my, my objection is that I just don't know if it's really the right place for it in Murfrees, you know, this place in Murfreesboro is really the right place. The Church Street, you know, I'm just not convinced that, that that's really gonna, all of a sudden, traffic's gonna get better because we add 1,500 cars and trucks a day. So I'd love to have you and especially with no assurances that phase one's gonna really go through, phase two's gonna go through. That's, that's where I'm struggling, so that's, that's my, my piece. I'll just end it at that.
Yeah, I, I don't know that there's any question. I mean, the intent's to build phase one and certainly before phase two would be completed. I think that's why we're trying to put our buffer in there to say that before phase two would be completed, that we would want to make sure that we would go ahead and have a potential of an extra traffic study done, which would allow us to make the appropriate decision at that time. I mean, we're talking so many years down the road now that honestly, the crystal ball has gotten more than fuzzy. And so I, I think it's so far down the road, when you get that far away, to look at it and say, it's not a, it is or it isn't a good idea. But, but, but I do, I do welcome the jobs to Murfreesboro. The, you know, the traffic studies there to indicate that it would be appropriate in this location. And I just, I, I just see it as a great opportunity to, to again, bring a great company into Murfreesboro. So I, I, and as far as a plan development, I don't know that, certainly from a council member's standpoint, and not even as a, a planning commissioner, that I would have the expertise to break down something of this level as far as this type of development. Now, when we're talking about a plan development, you know, when we're talking about a neighborhood or something, that we have some, a great deal of experience because we do it regularly. Also, we have the, if it were a small shopping mall or something like that, again, it's one of those things that we do regularly, so we have a great deal of experience. You know, this is kind of like an Amazon or a Nissan. I mean, you almost just have to, to hope that they get it right. I mean, because I'm not sure that, we, we just don't do this regularly enough to say that we're experts in planning what a FedEx crosswalk should look and operate like and what the, you know, but, but I'm sure that this isn't the first time they've built one of these and I'm sure they, they know what they're doing. So I'm going to trust their expertise in this case.
Mr. Blomley, I echo some of the comments. I think the one thing we really, as a city and a staff, need to be cognizant about is you've got, you know, going back towards the interstate, you predominantly are going to have one side that's going to be between Southern Container, Husky Trust, and now FedEx, that you've got some pretty intense uses that are on those, those sides of the road. I mean, I was out there today, I wanted to drive by and just make sure I wasn't missing anything and there was a semi-truck pulling out of Husky that, you know, sort of blocked some of the traffic as they were pulling trusses out. But we really need, and I'm not speaking for the rest of the council, but you have a lot of undeveloped property that's on the opposite side of Rutherford. I mean, if the applicants moving forward look to have an intense zoning with lots of traffic, that needs to be something that those property owners and the applicants know coming in, in my opinion, that, you know, you hate to say first come, first served, but it's been first come, first served with the people who are there already. And it's going to be hard for us to look at adding additional traffics on, with that undeveloped property that's there. So, you know, I think it's one of those things that we almost need to say by or beware when you're bringing new projects coming on that side of the road with that amount of property to make sure that we're very cognizant of the traffic that's, that's going to be added back in that corridor, so.
But of course, Mayor, members of council, as you know, we're currently doing the major thoroughfare plan. We've got a future land use plan that has been reviewed by the planning commission city council. Now Neil Schaefer is taking that future land use plan, existing traffic conditions and doing projections forward, and that information will be coming to you in the planning commission shortly.
What does this, what's the future land use map say for this right now? Does it say commercial highway?
Believe, I'm not sure, Matthew, have you looked at that? I thought it was going to be more industrial.
I can't say for certain. I, I would be surprised if it's not some type of commercial or industrial.
Yeah, so look, I, I just, you know, to clarify, what, what Eddie's saying, you know, I really agree with all that and, and really that's the reason that I'm cautious about it, is that looking out five, 10 years, I mean, they told me that the, the traffic study, folks told me that phase two, when phase two comes along, this facility is going to be 5,000 additional vehicles on the road. So when phase two is built, it's 5,000 vehicles. And unless we're widening or something, I mean, you know, we talked about Brentwood in our meeting and if you don't add some lanes, you don't do something, it's not going to get better. I mean, I, so when you look out into the future, it's hard to imagine saying 5,000 new cars plus.
Yeah.
The additional people, that's the part that I'm concerned about. And then not knowing if they go to phase one, the economy slows down, they don't go to phase two, do they start wanting to piece and parse some of these other pieces? I, you know.
It's not that I don't agree with everything you're saying, Rick. It's just that it's advantageous to FedEx for this to work as well. And I'll guarantee you that they've done their homework to understand that they believe that it'll work and.
Not Armory Drive.
You think that's, you think that traffic study worked out?
Maybe not. But, but the, I'm not sure that's all their fault, though. But, but the.
I don't want it to be our fault either, is the point.
Yeah. But, but they do have the ability to stage trucks, you know, if, if you go out there between midnight and 6:00 AM, there's not a traffic problem on Church Street or Rutherford Boulevard or Broad. I mean, which are the three main thoroughfares and Joe B. Jackson, I guess, will be the fourth main thoroughfare that will be affected by this. And with, with those things considered, that's probably when they're going to try and bring most of their trucks in and out. They're probably not going to be trying to move a whole lot of trucks at four and five in the afternoon because it's not advantageous for them to deliver their routes. I mean, they're on just-in-time delivery like everybody else, so for them to pull their truck out there and sit in traffic isn't advantageous to them or their drivers. So I, I'm, I'm pretty confident that, in, in this group that, that's doing this, that.
Also, there's rumors of a possible new interchange coming out there. Takes the state about 10, 10 to 11 years to, to build an interchange. And, and that's the first, that's the end of your first stage. So, you know, rumors run rampant, but I, I think maybe the governor and the, and the city and the state and the county would, should look at this to.
They told me that couldn't happen. I asked about that.
Did you tell them?
I mean, that's what they said, is it wouldn't go happen. So just FYI.
Any other questions?
The only comment that I would make is, you know, in a growing city like ours, it's the ying and the yang of it. Do you build the road and then expect somebody to want to build a facility like this? Do you improve the road and tell and wait? Or do you have them build the road and then we have to address this? I think that's what, when we did 2035 and started doing a major thoroughfare plan, we're going to address what our capacities of our roads are and have to make a plan to address those in key areas like this. To me, it would make sense to move forward when the opportunity for all of us are there to create those jobs, to have that corporate citizen here, and then address those issues of infrastructure as we go forward.
Yeah.
No, I was just getting ready to make a motion.
Well, that's the most.
Make this a motion, Madeline.
If I may interject, ask Mr. Ives a question. Do we need to, before we make the motion, make a motion, make a separate motion to amend the area being considered for rezoning since we removed the Dairy Berry property and the 10-foot strip?
That might be cleaner. Yes, I would recommend that.
I'll make a motion for the amendment first.
To, to remove these three portions.
Well, the, the.
From the zoning.
From the zoning.
Husky and the CSX was not included, so it would just be the Dairy Berry and the 10-foot strip.
Just one question, Matthew. The project is 217, is what you said, 217 acres?
Oh, 217 acres.
Yeah, but the, but the 226, is there some reason for the difference?
The 226 includes the right-of-way of, of South Rutherford Boulevard? Technically, according to our zoning ordinance, the right-of-way is, is zoned.
Okay, now I understand.
So you have the amendment in front of you, so we have a motion on the amendment? We need a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We now will consider for passage on first reading ordinance 160Z49, a zoning area as amended along South Rutherford Boulevard, its highway commercial CH district simultaneous with annexation.
Mr. LaLance?
Second. All right, we have Mr. Smotherman, Ms. Gels Harris. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Pursuant to Resolution 16RPH54 adopted by the City Council on October 13th, 2016, we need to conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately eight acres located along South Rutherford Boulevard from single-family residential 10 RS10 District to residential zero-lot line RZ District, Swanson Development applicant 2016-451. Notice of the said public hearing was published in October 34th, 2016, issue of a local newspaper.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor McFarland. The next public hearing is property located on South Rutherford Boulevard. It's the purple area, eight acres, that is requested to be rezoned from RS10 to RZ. It's been undeveloped and zoned RS10 for a number of years and has never moved forward with development. There, there are a number of different zoning classifications in the area. Even though the property to the north is zoned RS10, and the property across the street is zoned RS10, there's also RM12 apartments, as well as zero-lot line homes to the south. So, there are a variety, variety of zoning classifications and uses in the property. Mr. Swanson brings this request to us today. He wants to develop the property with a single-family subdivision, but he wants to be able to develop it with lots that are smaller than the 10,000 square foot lots that are allowed in the RS10 zoning district. So, he's requested the RZ zone, which does allow smaller lot sizes, but he does intend to build a single-family residential subdivision on the subject property. Because of the shape of the subject property and it's, it's multiple road access points, it's difficult to, to say what the lot yield would be. So, but RZ does permit lots of a minimum of 3,000 square feet in size, but we rarely see single-family lots that are 3,000 square feet in size in the RZ zone. So, typically, we'd see something more along the lines of, of 5,000 square feet. With that being said, the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on October the 5th and unanimously recommends approval of this rezoning request. Mr. Steve Steele and Mr. Joe Swanson are here, if you have any questions for them. And I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. And hopefully, this is the last time you'll have to hear my gravelly voice.
You have this rezoning request in front of you. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come to the podium. We'll open the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider for passage on first reading order 160Z54 to rezoning area located along South Rutherford Boulevard to residential zero-lot line RZ District 2016-451. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Okay, pursuant to Resolution 16RPH50 adopted by the City Council on October 13th, 2016, we need to conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 6.6 acres located along Salem Creek Drive from General Office OG District to Planned Residential Development PRD District, Ashton at Salem Creek. David Alcorn is the applicant, 2016-452. Notice of the said public hearing was published in October 31st, 2016, issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, Mayor. The next public hearing is for you to consider a zoning change request for some property located along the eastern side of Salem Creek Drive, as shown in the illustration before you, and along Salem Creek Court. Salem Creek Drive is just off of Highway 96 or New Salem Highway. The property is shaded orange on the map before you, and you can see that there are several parcels included in this zoning change request. There are nine, to be exact. The properties are currently zoned OG, that's General Office District, and that has, these have been developed, but the lots have been created, but there's been no building placed on these lots. So, Mr. David Alcorn, who's the applicant, has a application pending to you to change the zoning to PRD, that's Planned Residential District, and they've called the PRD Ashton at Salem Creek. The program book should have been couriered to you, and you should have a copy of it in your packet for review with specifications of the zoning for this property. The proposed PRD is to allow 42 multifamily townhouse dwellings on 6.6 acres, and that's a density of approximately 6.4 dwelling units per acre. The units that front along Salem Creek Drive, which has direct connection to 99, will have rear access garages off of Salem Court, and then the other units that are fronting on Salem Creek Court will have front entry garages. This property is located just south of a church, and, and that's a large parcel to the north, and across Salem Creek Drive is also another church. Property to the south is the floodway and some common area, and then further to the south is a single-family residential subdivision. The applicants did hold a neighborhood meeting for this project. The Planning Commission did consider this item, and with one abstention, the other members voted unanimously to approve the PRD zoning change request. Mr. Steve Steele and Mr. David Alcorn are here this evening, they're representing the application, and they'll come up and present to you the specifics of the plan. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Mayor McFarland, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Steve Steele with Huddleston Steel Engineering. We're located at 2115 Northwest Broad here in Murfreesboro. I am here tonight representing Mr. David Alcorn, who is also in the office, in the audience, rather. As Margaret Ann mentioned, our proposal is for 42 single-family attached homes. There are 10 two-bedroom homes, 32 three-bedroom homes. All will have one-car garage and two parking spaces in front of the units. If you do the math, that's 84 driveway spaces. In addition, we have three satellite parking areas that will provide 45 additional spaces to provide what we think is adequate parking. There is a small amenity area for this small development where there's a pavilion for picnicking. There will be a homeowners association to maintain the property. Restricted covenants will be submitted to the city. The homes will have a minimum size of 1,600 square feet. They will be primarily masonry, which would consist of either brick, cultured stone, and/or cement fiber board. There would be no subdivision signage entering this small subdivision. The sidewalks would connect the neighborhood with the adjoining Salem Creek Drive. They will, there will be a mail kiosk in the development for the delivery of mail, so you won't have a mail truck stopping on Salem Creek Drive. I think most of you know where this is and realize that the infrastructure is pretty much in place. The water, sewer, drainage, the concrete curbs, the stone, the roads are basically there. This property just not has developed as office general. And we feel like that the product that Mr. Alcorn wants to build will provide a, a good transition from the commercial property to the north and the residential property to the south. And I will be glad at the appropriate time to try to answer any questions you all might have.
Any questions for Mr. Steele? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing and consider a request for this zoning change. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Chelsea Cooper. I'm a resident of the Salem Creek neighborhood at 2423 Trevor Trail. And I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of myself and many of my neighbors. And I want to thank you for the opportunity, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you, to address some of the questions and concerns we have regarding this rezoning proposal for the area in front of our neighborhood. The proposal to rezone to Planned Residential District has many of us concerned for several reasons, which I'd like to bring to your attention. First, per previous city council decision and a recent post on your Facebook page, Mr. Mayor, we understand that there's a temporary moratorium in place for multifamily rezoning. And while we understand from a technical standpoint that moratorium was specifically for apartment-type zoning, we wonder if the general intent behind the moratorium should still apply in this situation. As you stated in your post, Mr. Mayor, there's an overabundance of multifamily dwellings already available or waiting to be built, and we're just not convinced that this complex is really in the best interest of the city. Second, and more importantly, traffic is a major concern for us. Our neighborhood is currently in the process of adding 40 additional homes, and there are 42 proposed units in this development. So, by the time both are finished, the best-case scenario is in addition of 82 cars to the traffic flow, and more realistically, closer to 200 if you consider two cars for every family. At Salem Creek Drive, New Salem Highway is only one lane in each direction, and from our understanding, there's no plan to widen that portion of the road. And at peak times, especially in the morning, traffic backs up along New Salem Highway from the I-24 ramp all the way to our neighborhood. It can take upwards of 10 minutes just to turn onto New Salem Highway from Salem Creek Drive during those peak times. And I imagine, when the widening project does get started in the next couple of years, that that's only going to get worse. The traffic backup also greatly impedes visibility coming onto, it impedes visibility of oncoming traffic, I'm sorry. And we're concerned about the safety of those conditions. We feel that adding an additional 200 cars will exacerbate that problem greatly. While traffic would increase slightly for a general office development, we feel that it would not be nearly as significant, and it would be more evenly spaced throughout the day. Plus, it would be coming from New Salem as opposed to onto New Salem. We haven't heard anything about a traffic study having been conducted to determine the impact of this development, and therefore, we respectfully request that you postpone this rezoning decision until that traffic study has been conducted. We recognize that we're a small voice in this decision process, and we fully stand behind the concerns that I've just expressed, and we believe that they'll be thoughtfully considered as you make your decision. My hope and the hope of many of my neighbors is that you will vote to keep the area rezoned as office general. But should that not be possible, we hope that you'll postpone those, that decision based on the results of a traffic study. If you do vote tonight to approve the rezoning, we ask that the good faith changes the developer made as a result of our neighborhood meeting, including but not limited to the brick facade of the townhomes facing Salem Creek Drive, more shielding of the dumpster areas, and a sidewalk system that discourages deliveries and parking on Salem Creek Drive, be included requirements as a condition of the approval. Thank you once again for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diane Caldwell, I also live in Salem Creek. Our preference, of course, would be to have nice houses built on that property, but that's just not going to happen. We don't see businesses going on at that property. It's been sitting weeds unsightly for 10 years now that we've lived there. And if this is postponed downstream, and this gentleman's project is not finished, we have the possibility that when the apartment moratorium is lifted, that we may end up seeing a three- or four-story apartment going on that property with 150-plus apartment buildings. These gentlemen have gone out of their way to fix up the front two buildings with brick to accommodate the visual as you drive into the street to the house that's existing there and to our subdivision. They've gone over backwards. I don't think we're going to get that from someone building a large apartment complex. So, I hope you will approve what they're asking for, and let's get this done and taken care of. The traffic, it's not their problem. Most of the traffic, we live on Beulah, which comes through from the other subdivisions. The bulk of our traffic coming down Beulah, which is a raceway, consists of the subdivisions and all the areas south and southwest of us, who uses it as a cut-through to avoid St. Andrews and 99 at the traffic light. So, that's just the other side of the coin, and I hope you'll take that into consideration and grant this zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading order 160Z50 to rezoning area located along Salem Creek Drive to Planned Residential Development PRD District, Ashton at Salem Creek. Ms. Green? Just to make sure, we're doing, this is a planned development? This is not a multifamily zoning, correct?
Sorry, it's a PRD, Planned Residential District development. And really, these are single-family attached units, not true multifamily units, which I think is where we were drawing the distinction between, in the moratorium. Multifamily developments are when you have multiple families living in one structure. These are individual structures that happen to be connected for, at a time. So, they're single-family attached or townhomes.
Ms. Green, first, let me say how nice it is to listen to somebody who doesn't have a scratchy voice.
We're going to call this meeting adjourned?
I, I'm not sure if this question's for you or Mr. Huddleston or Mr. Belashandra, but my question is, there seemed to be some question as to whether or not, whether it was OG or whether it was a planned development, that the traffic would increase with the planned development. And I'm not sure that that would necessarily be accurate because a business that would fall under the OG category could certainly carry a great deal more traffic than this resident relatively small neighborhood, couldn't it?
It, it would vary on the type of business. OG allows several types of businesses. You could have medical offices, which have quite a bit of traffic, and dental offices. You could have real estate offices. You could have lawyers, which sometimes their account may be a little bit less than something like a medical office or dental office. Various types of commercial uses, it, it more depends on the type of use as opposed to the zoning. And we didn't think, we, we considered this a downzoning going from the OG commercial zone to a residential zone, a PRD as a residential zone.
Have, have the, they mentioned concessions that were made at neighborhood meeting. Have they been incorporated into the...
Sure, so we have the, the program book that you have. Some of those questions were the units that have frontage on Salem Creek Drive. Mr. Alcorn had a specific architectural style proposed, but they wanted those to be, and have on the screen what was initially proposed. If you want to pull that up, I know that it's before you on your computer, and you can see it's a mixture of some kind, stone and hardy. And the residents asked for it to be brick because their homes have brick, and so I'll take you to an illustration that shows the revised. And so now I have on the screen the revision for those. They asked for screening that dumpster, and that's something that we'd require anyway, and so that's something that we'll also see. There was some conversation about not wanting a sidewalk connection from the units that face Salem Creek Drive to the public sidewalk network, and that the developer had committed to that. But at the night of the public hearing, I stated that that would be something that staff would not be in favor of, that we want that sidewalk connection to be made because that's good planning, it complies with our subdivision regulations. And quite frankly, it would not discourage deliveries. I think their, their feeling was that if that sidewalk didn't connect to the public sidewalk network, then all these Amazon deliveries or whatever somebody might get wouldn't happen in the front, and that simply just isn't true. I can tell you from my experience, from where I live, I know a street that has much more traffic. And I put stipulations on my delivery package, because I'm a corner lot in the, in the back, but sometimes people still choose to stop on Clark Boulevard and deliver packages. So, not connecting that really will not accomplish the goal. What we did make sure they do is have those mail kiosks and put them on that secondary street. No mail will be delivered by the post office from, from Salem Creek Drive. And I did talk to our engineering department and our planning director about that. And so, it was a concern, that I understand their concern, but I really don't think that that's the solution for that problem. And because it's in the PRD program book, it's the zoning for the property, and so it's something that they, they would be happy to, and not just a good faith.
Ms. Green, I may be getting this mixed up, but did they initially have the sidewalks further from the roadway? And now we've got them next to the roadway, or...
They did, and they did that, as, they being the developer, did that as a way to work well with... They did, and they did that... As they being the developer did that as a way to work well with the neighbors and give them something they wanted. But when I saw it, I told them that the sidewalk needed to be in the public right-of-way because that's, again, our development policy. Sidewalk goes in the public right-of-way, and it's not only for these residents, but the residents who live further in subdivision to use that public sidewalk network. The developer would be responsible for installing it and paying for it to install it, but then it would become the city's responsibility to maintain it. So what we see now is something that is more in line with our subdivision regulations and our street standard policies. There was also a ditch. I think the developer wanted to... There was a ditch in front of the units on the south side of Salem Creek Court, and he thought maybe he could just leave the ditch. But our subdivision regulations don't allow large ditches in the front of residential lots. They can be in commercial lots if there's no drive. And so that's going to have to be piped, and there's not going to be a ditch there. It's going to be a level surface in front of these units. I don't think it was anything malicious. I know that the developer has a history of wanting to work with the residents and just give them whatever they like, but we also want to make sure that that's consistent throughout the city and that we apply our development regulations consistently.
We're here for a motion.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Hearing done, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution sixteen RPH fifty-two adopted by the City Council on October thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately point seven-two acres at seven-twenty Old Salem Road from residential multifamily twelve, RM twelve, to District, to Highway Commercial, CH District. John Rudd, applicant, two thousand and sixteen dash four forty-three. Notice this said public hearing was published in the October thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you. This next item is for you to consider a zoning application that's been made to you for a parcel that's located on the corner of Old Salem Road and Douglas Avenue, and it's identified in the blue color on the map before you. This parcel is currently developed with a building that has been used as a church and has a special use permit to operate as a church. Recently went to the Board of Zoning Appeals so that it could amend the special use permit or get a new special use permit in April to allow the use of it as a group shelter. The properties to the north and to the surrounding the property are zoned for multifamily uses or across Salem Road are heavy industrial uses. The applicants... The applicant, Dr. John Rudd, is very interested in operating a group shelter at this site and will operate that group shelter whether or not the zoning change request is approved. His plan, though, is he'd like to do an addition to the existing building, and that addition would be for a warehouse that he could rent, and that rent can help fund his group shelter. And so it's a commercial warehouse. The CH District, as is noted in the zoning ordinance, is intended to permit the development and continued maintenance of general commercial uses located in a linear fashion along highways and your transportation facilities and industrial areas. There are some industrial areas that are located along Old Salem Road that you're probably familiar with. I've also included lists of uses permitted in the existing zone, which is multifamily residential district, and the proposed zone, which is commercial highway district. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of this zoning change request. If you have questions, I'll be most happy to answer them either before or after your public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. We'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We will consider for passage on first reading ordinance sixteen OZ fifty-two to rezone an area at seven-twenty Old Salem Road, Highway Commercial, CH District, two thousand and sixteen dash four forty-three. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution sixteen RPH forty-eight adopted by the City Council on September twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen, will conduct a public hearing to consider amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter twenty-five point twenty-five, sign, section twenty-five point twenty-five dash two, twenty-five dot point twenty-five dash twenty-four, and twenty-five point twenty-five dash twenty-six, dealing with certain definitions, prohibited signs, signs placed in easements, height of attached signs in the central business CBD District, and interstate onsite signs, two thousand and sixteen dash eight oh three. Planning staff is the applicant. Notice this said public hearing was published in the October thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen issue of a local newspaper.
Ms. Kerr?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight's public hearing is to propose amendments to various sections of the sign ordinance. The proposed ordinance will add definitions for an awning, for an awning sign, and for projecting signs. These additions to definitions will allow projecting signs and awning signs, which are not currently allowed in the city of Murfreesboro, and changes to the current definition of attached signs to be able to allow projecting and awning signs. An awning sign is a type of sign that is painted on, printed on, or attached to an awning, and may be attached to a vertical awning face or the top of an awning face. And this is an allowable type of attached sign. We've had numerous requests for this over the past year and a half. It would be like home of the Whopper over the top of a Burger King sign. Awning, there are metal awnings out front. A projecting sign is a type of sign that is substantially perpendicular to the face to which it is attached. You've probably seen this at Bar Louie's at the Avenue. This is allowed as a portion of their plan sign overlay at the avenue or the grandfathered sign downtown at Holden Hardware. The current definition of an attached sign is proposed to be changed to allow the projecting and awning signs. The current definition states that an attached sign may not extend beyond any limits of the surface to which it is attached. This will change to an attached sign may not extend beyond any limits to the surface to which it is attached, provided that an attached sign is mounted parallel to the surface to which it is attached shall be mounted so that the sign face is not more than eighteen inches away from the surface to which it is attached. Now, this is just a regular attached sign, channel letter sign, box sign, that's on the face of a building. This stipulation is to keep from having signs that are extended out from a building by poles or whatever, you know, twelve or fourteen feet away from the building. We do have regulations within the definitions of projected sign and awning signs to regulate the stipulations to be allowed to have the projecting signs and awning signs. The prohibited section of the sign ordinance currently prohibits signs to be placed in or over any public utility or drainage easement without the approval of BZA easement holders and the Director of Building and Codes. This process generally adds one to two months to an application of a sign, application approval, an additional two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar application fee, and additional timing costs associated with BZA application and presentation. If all parties that have interest in the placement of the sign within an easement and the Director of Building and Codes approves the application, submission to the BZA seems to be an unnecessary burden on the BZA, the applicant, and staff. Staff proposes to amend the ordinance, amend the ordinance to make the approval of signs in easements an administrative function. In order to change this, staff has created a form for an application for revocable license for placement of signs in a utility easement. This license agreement will allow applicants to request approvals and signatures for the sign placement from the easement holders and the Director of Building and Codes based on a site plan exhibit. After all required signatures are acquired, the applicant will have the document recorded to provide notice to future property owners and interested parties. Another proposed amendment will eliminate the height limitation restriction of attached signs in the central business district, which now provides that signs may only be at ground-level floor or sixteen-foot in height, whichever is higher. The amendment will allow signs to extend above the ground-level floor within the CBD. This, again, you know, if you have a projecting sign, it doesn't... It can't be a significant type of sign if it can't extend above the first floor of the building. So finally, the proposed ordinance amendment will also modify requirements for interstate onsite signs. The ordinance currently requires that these signs either be non-illuminated, push-through style illumination, or indirectly illuminated. Push-through style lighting for this type of sign has proven to be unnecessary and inexpensive, burdensome on the applicants without any significant benefits to the city due to the height of these signs at fifty feet in the air. The proposed amendment will eliminate the requirement for the push-through style illumination on interstate onsite signs. These signs are also located within commercial highway and heavy industrial areas, so they don't seem to... The push-through style illumination doesn't give us any extra added benefit. Another regulation on interstate onsite signs is that they have landscaping at the base of the sign, which usually, with the location of these signs and the nature of the soil surrounding the base of these signs with the concrete and asphalt around them, attempts at landscaping areas around the base are rarely successful. The proposed amendment will delete this requirement as well. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from Ms. Kerr? We love talking about signage.
Wake up.
All right, we need to conduct a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against these changes to our ordinance, please come to the podium. I'll open the public hearing. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading. Ordinance sixteen oh forty-eight to amend Chapter twenty-five, twenty-five point twenty-five dash signs, sections twenty-five point twenty-five dash two, twenty-five dash twenty-four, and twenty-five point twenty-five dash twenty-six, dealing with certain definitions, prohibited signs, signs placed in easements, height of attached signs in the central business CBD District, and interstate onsite signs.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the principal planner regarding public hearings to consider zoning along Florence Road LI, zoning along Wilkinson Pike and Gresham Park MU, and to remove Wilkinson Pike buffer on these properties, annexation plan of services and annexation petition for Asbury Road and Asbury Lane, zoning along Asbury Road and Asbury Lane, PRD, Kingsbury Development, simultaneous with annexation, zoning along Old Fort Parkway for a PUD, Old Fort Plaza PUD, annexation plan of services and annexation petition along Osborne Lane, zoning along Osborne Lane RS twelve, RS ten, simultaneous with annexation, and amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding seasonal fireworks sales, temporary mobile recycling centers, and temporary vendors.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The Planning Department and Legal Department got together, and I think they agreed to start recommending public hearings a different way. So we're going to have... We're going to schedule eight public hearings tonight. During this regular meeting on November the second, the Planning Commission conducted public hearings on the matters that the mayor just read. After the public hearings, the Planning Commission discussed the matters and took action to recommend their approval. We're going to try three dates. The first date's going to be December the fifteenth, and that's going to be for Item A.
When was that?
On Florence Road. Item E, which is on Old Fort Parkway. And Item H, which is amendments to the zoning ordinance, fireworks vendors. And we recommend December the fifteenth for those.
I'm not going to be here on the eighth, so if y'all want to get some of these knocked out. A little faster. You might want to get six or seven of them done that.
Let's do them all then. All right. We have a recommendation for the public hearings as listed for December the fifteenth.
Move to schedule those public hearings for December fifteenth.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, the second set of public hearings are recommended for January the twelfth, and that's Item C, which is annexation on Asbury Road and Asbury Lane in addition to the zoning application for Asbury Road and Asbury Lane, and another annexation on Osborne Lane, which is Item F, and Item G, which is a zoning application for Osborne Lane. We recommend January the twelfth for that, for those.
Okay.
You're not going to be here either that night, are you?
I can make it happen.
Move we schedule those public hearings for January twelfth.
We have a motion. Motion is second. Mr. Shacklet, did the...
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
And the last public hearing will be scheduled. We recommend public hearings for January the twenty-sixth, which is Item B. It's a zoning application for a property on Wilkinson Pike and Gresham Park Drive for January twenty-sixth.
Isn't that your snow skiing trip?
Move we schedule a public hearing January twenty-sixth.
Second. We have a motion. I have a second.
We're taking that money down here.
We have a second.
We did.
We did have a second, okay.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
He's got us in the mid-January.
We'll now consider recommendations of the Human Resources Director regarding the public safety and Unified Pay Plan Market Analysis Study.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Murfreesboro City Council. As additional background in the agenda packet this evening, on the agenda, of course, is the regular agenda item for the public safety and Unified Pay Plan Market Analysis Study. Additional background would be that the Management Advisory Group was the successful proposer following the two thousand and thirteen RFCSP for a Classification and Compensation Study Plan Consultant. As a reminder, this RFCSP was based upon the two thousand and thirteen City Council-approved Focus and Framework Document and Guidelines for Revising the Classification and Compensation Plan, which at that point in time had been in place since two thousand and four and was provided by Burris and Associates. Also, as a reminder, the two thousand and fifteen study and implementation was based upon a combination of internal equity assessments, market survey results, and a quantitative point factor analysis which met the goals of the two thousand and thirteen Focus and Framework Directive. The Management Advisory Group proposal includes a market analysis to compare the original study benchmark job classifications, salary ranges, compared with peers, competitors, and regional employers. And as a special note, their offer includes a presentation to Murfreesboro City Council following the completion of their analysis with recommendations for council's consideration. I would remind City Council that this past fiscal year, a two percent salary range increase was provided for all applicable salary ranges. This followed the analysis conducted internally by the Employment Cost Index, which is a semi-annual benchmark provided by the Department of Labor's Bureau of Labor Statistics. You'll also note that the benchmark classifications, as presented in the amendment, represent a majority of city employee positions and include all rank-and-file job classifications within the public safety pay plan. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Godwin? I'm not sure I've got a question, but I've got a comment. My comment would be that, you know, we had a...
My comment would be that, you know, we had a discussion last Thursday in the early meeting about kinda developing a culture and a culture of trust and all that kinda stuff, and I just don't feel like it really exists with MAG. And I think it would just be, I think it'd be a better decision to try to look at somebody else, maybe get a different set of eyes on the situation. I understand how MAG might be appropriate to do it, they've already got some experience with their organization and all that, I understand that side of it. But I think the employees, I don't know this to be fact, but it just seems to me, my sense is that the employees would rather have someone else other than MAG do this. And so I don't know how much more that costs us or why that would be, why that would hurt us to try that, but that'd kinda be my lean.
Ms. Blines, do you think there'd be a significant increase or change in the price if we were to go with someone other than that? I kinda tend to agree with Rick on this.
I couldn't answer that question in terms of what someone else may look at. You know, the biggest part of this analysis is collecting salary data, minimum salary data, maximum salary data from the other communities. That's the data that gets collected, and then it's compared to our current ranges to see, are we in step with the market? Certainly MAG constructed our classification plan, that's grade one oh one through, I think, grade one thirty-nine, and that's what gets walked over. The fact that, you know, City Council approved the two percent increase last year suggests to me, I think our ranges ought to be right in line with the market. If it's, you know, council's direction to have us look at somebody else, we can, you know, if that's the direction of council, we can do that. They're also going to look at the minimum and maximum pay of other city governments. It's calling the Human Resource Department and making sure that the jobs, the benchmark positions are a good match. So it's not just calling up and saying, what's the minimum and maximum pay? They really need to make sure that it's a good fit. There's a little bit of work involved there, but it all comes back to the minimum and maximum pay for those benchmark positions to see how it compares to us. Unlike last year's study where we looked at placements in grades, administrative reviews, none of that is part of a market update like this. This really is the data collection.
This is really just to see what the market looks like and where we're sitting in comparison to the market. We're not looking at grades, we're not looking at anything.
Yes, sir.
And. No.
Cause you don't think the cost will go up then? I'm sorry, that, for his, I was curious of that, too.
What I, I don't know that, you know, the data collection piece, it's how would they then get their brain around our classification system and how was it done the previous time?
But we own that study information that we purchased, so we could easily give that to anyone and say, here's the information that was currently gathered and this is the ranges we're operating within. And yeah, I absolutely am positive that there is somewhat, or a great deal of concern about a MAG study. And I really do feel that it would be advantageous to us in trying to help our employees understand that we're trying to be as clear and transparent as we possibly can be, that we would maybe try somebody different than MAG.
Yeah, and the nice part about it is, I mean, I think we're gonna be close, you know, I mean, so we would get some kinda, it'd give us some confirmation that, yeah, hey, this is a whole nother set of eyes looking at it, and it's, you know, we kinda remove that possibility of, ah, they just kinda hit copy and, you know, hit copy and paste, and they already had their, you know, had it figured out.
And it does add the potential of someone stepping in and saying, this just looks like it's out of line, and which, you know, I think MAG would be very hesitant to question their work, and by having a second set of eyes look at their work that we purchased from them, I think it would be advantageous to our employees and city as well.
Well, we can go back, get some more information. We'll consider, Mr. Godwin and I will meet, sit down, see what other firms make a do this, and explore further what that would cost, and then come back to you.
You know, I think what may be good as well, what started this discussion is, you know, at our retreat, another thing that I think we all talked about was realizing that we need to look at not only what we originally started the discussion with, talking about looking at safety providers, emergency service providers, and really breaking that subsection, those subsections out of, in specifically studying those. So if there is another group that solely focuses on emergency service providers, you know, I would, just my opinion, I don't think it has to be one size fits all. If there's a group that focuses on those subsets, then I don't think it has to be the same group that looks at both of those, 'cause, you know, I think what we talked about and what we're seeing with changes, not only nationally, but what you're seeing locally, regionally, we need to make sure that where we are saying now that we're not necessarily just competing with our region or our local areas, we're now on some of these jobs, you've got Atlanta coming to Nashville to try to recruit people, so let's try to make sure that we're looking at a larger pool with this, with emergency service providers.
We'll see who's out there.
Yeah. Okay.
I was just gonna say, I think that would be transparent, and it would send a positive signal to our employees.
And what we're looking for is not only for our employees, but I wanna be able to look at it and with full confidence say, this is a fair and rating of where our employees should be paid. And that's my target I'm trying to get to, is not just for our employees' sake, but for me, when an employee calls me because, in complete honesty right now, when somebody calls me and says, do you think I'm paid exactly what I should be? I can't say yes. And so that's kinda at the end of this study. I think we need to get to the point that we're fully confident of, we should be able to answer that question, yes, you are fairly paid.
Yeah, because we still have some serious issues with the pay right now in some classes.
So do we need a motion on this to defer?
We'll come back to you.
Okay.
Could I ask one question, though? Do we regularly get these kind of requests from these peer cities that we're looking at? I mean, how often? What's the, what's, I mean, if they're looking at us and we're looking at them and all this kinda, how often does that peer evaluation, is it done every two years or three years? Or?
To answer your first question, Mr. Shacklet, we are frequently asked to share our compensation results. City Knoxville, for example, recently asked us to share over a hundred job classifications. They do a semi-annual review, I'm sorry, once every two years. So they would be similar, but they're also civil service. So you have other expectations with respect to the ranges and the classes that come along with that. But it's, again, just about every two, three weeks, we receive some sort of a survey from another competitor, whether it be a, someone in the Tennessee area or someone outside of Middle Tennessee. And so I think that the recommendation at the resolution, if I'm not mistaken, two thousand fifteen was to at least review the market analysis every three years. So this particular timing is about half that time, it's a year and a half after implementation.
Okay, I think you've, I don't think we have to take a vote to let you know. I think you've taken it, you got it? Okay. We'll now consider recommendations of the Fire and Rescue Chief regarding approval of an interlocal cooperation agreement with Rutherford County. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We, the Fire Department has been responding to emergency medical calls for approximately the last fourteen years, and under that, under responding to those, we have to have a memorandum of understanding or some type of an agreement in place with our EMS provider to do that. In the past, this has been accomplished by having a memorandum of understanding between the city and the county with regards to first responder services. Before you tonight is an interlocal agreement that accomplishes that, but it also accomplishes an additional requirement of state law, which is for the city to recognize Rutherford County as the primary emergency ambulance provider within the city of Murfreesboro. And it also changes some of the parameters within the memorandum of understanding that we had in the past through this agreement. We've been negotiating this agreement for quite some time with the county, we've had several meetings with them, with Rutherford County EMS, and we've come to terms on that agreement. I wanna say appreciation to the mayor for meeting with the county mayor and kinda finalizing this agreement, pulling together some of the terms for supply, recovery for us, for our medications and supplies, and I really appreciate that. But this agreement that you have before us both recognizes Rutherford County EMS as our primary ambulance provider, but it also adheres to the rules and regulation requirements from the Division of EMS with the coordination of the first responder services and the transport services together. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Chief Fokes, how long is that term of this agreement?
I think the agreement basically is until.
It's, well, each party can.
Terminate with them.
Terminate it within thirty.
Thirty days.
Thirty days with calls, one hundred and eighty days without calls.
Yes.
So it's a.
So it's pretty well permanent with the ability to get out of the contract if you need to.
Anytime.
And this agreement essentially allows us to, it kind of enhances our ability to provide the advanced level services that we started providing in September, as well as the advanced level service through paramedics that we will begin in early two thousand seventeen.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Outstanding.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. That has been, how long has that taken us to work through, Chief?
A long time.
Yeah. This'll be a good high five moment. So, and wanna say thank you to the county for working with us, you know, that's one thing that kept talking about, that although we are city residents, we're county residents too, and at the end of the day, we wanna do what we can to provide the best service to all of our residents, county or city, 'cause I, rest assured, I would feel safe in saying this, with Chief Lawson and Chief Fokes, whenever you roll up onto a, an accident scene, you don't have our Fire and Rescue Department who asks them to see their car to show whether they live in the county or the city, they just help that person. So I think that's one thing that we're all Rutherford County residents. So we wanna hear now from the Purchasing Department Director on a department update.
Mayor, Mr. Boyer comes forward. We've been doing monthly departmental updates, we missed a month or so. Mr. Boyer wanted to come this month and tell you about some of the great things he's been working on as, he's come on full-time as our purchasing director.
Thanks, Rob. Mayor and Council, I appreciate here a couple of minutes, and Rob asked me to keep this to a couple of minutes, and I will keep it to a couple of minutes. I've been working as your purchasing director now either part-time or full-time since February When I was first asked by Rob to come do this work, I, the thought that went through my mind, never having worked in purchasing, was the old cartoon of the astronauts going to the moon and the commander saying, remember, guys, this is on low bid. We're trying to change that culture with our department to best value rather than low bid. We have been working with the departments to be good stewards of public funds by using what we know about the market and what they do to help them acquire the resources they need to deliver services. My initial assessment of what we were faced with was we needed to improve our reputation. So we, being Sean Poore, my purchasing analyst, and myself, have worked real hard to become a customer-service-driven organization rather than a regulator. That doesn't mean we let people get away with murder, it just means we try to sell them on what the right thing is to do rather than make them do the right thing. Along those lines, some things that we've been working on, we've been working on rewriting the purchasing ordinance to allow for the delegation of purchasing authority below the department head level. Currently, every requisition in the city, and we've processed over thirty-four hundred so far this fiscal year, that would be since July first, has to be reviewed and approved by the department director and myself. That's if it's for three dollars and forty-seven cents, three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, it doesn't matter. Discussions I have had with the departments and with the city manager, there's indications that there's probably better things some people can be doing than approving a requisition for three dollars and forty-seven cents. So we're trying to push down that decision-making authority. That will make our organization more responsive. That will make our organization operate as a twenty-first century culture where we trust our people that are doing the work to acquire the resources that they need to get the job done without having to go back to the department head, come over to personnel, or come over to purchasing and city hall, they can just go do it. Coupled with that is we're working on the development of a purchasing card, or what's known more in, among those of us that work in local government, is a pay card system. What that is, is basically a city credit card that lets those employees that the city manager and each department head have determined may do this, take a credit card and go to Lowe's, go to the hardware store, whatever, to buy the things they need right now. Not, again, not go through all the paperwork, and again, not ask that local small business to wait for our check system to reimburse them. It'll go through the charge card system just like any other person's charge card that's used in their business. So we think that's a good thing. Another thing we found was that we're not getting the kinda competition that we would like to see for our work. That has caused us to, we have, the purchasing department, prior to my arrival, started using a service known as Vendor Link to advertise all our bids. We have found that Vendor Link is not necessarily a southeastern-focused business, they're more of a nationwide-focused business. We found a company called Vendor Registry, whose headquarters is in Knoxville, they have an office in Nashville, they do business primarily in Tennessee, Georgia, and Florida. They have over sixty-five local governments just in Tennessee as clients. We're gonna try their service starting January first in the hope that that will create more competition by vendors who are here in Tennessee. We've also developed a model for construction projects using the construction manager at risk procedure, which is you have previously approved the construction of the Police Department using that model, and the construction of Fire Station Four using that model, and using the things we've learned from that, we've now come up with a model solicitation document that we have used for the Public Safety Training Center, which opens tomorrow, and we will be using, we currently have on the street, for a CM at risk to build a new airport terminal. Finally, we've been working, we've been working with each department during construction projects to try to improve process and get projects done in a more timely manner. We've had some issues in the past with lingering questions that have caused projects to drag on, and what the city managers asked me to do is get more involved on a day-to-day basis in all our construction projects and look for process improvement. So we've been doing that, don't really have anything yet to report on that, but we probably will by the end of the fiscal year. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I knew Mr. Boyer was smart because one of the decisions he made when he was the Columbia City Manager was he hired Jennifer Moody to be his assistant city manager.
All right, Ms. Wright, any beer permits?
Not any tonight.
I don't think we have any board and commission approvals. Any statements to say? Other business from staff or City Council? Ms. Blines, I have one thing, I just wanted to follow up, if you would, maybe email the council out. The apartment complex that's being built on Manson Pike.
Yes.
Had another one, the homeowners contacted me to, just seeing where we were on that.
Okay.
I forget what the name of the apartment complex, it's the, maybe your.
I know exactly which complex it is, I'll double back with staff. I know we were looking closely, obviously with the lack of rain, it's been difficult for many projects to control dust, but we were trying to make sure they had a water truck out there.
Okay.
And also watching the landscape work that was done, there was some concern over that, and we were watching that very closely as well.
Okay. All right, any other business? This'll be our last meeting before Thanksgiving, so I know we all have lots to be thankful for in the city, so I wanna wish all the residents out there to have a great, great Thanksgiving, and tell all of our employees, we thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for your family sharing you guys with us. Also, we have the Christmas parade. Chief Fokes, I think it's December the twelfth, let me look at my. Let me look at my calendar and make sure. So, if we wanna put that on our calendar, it's tough to already be, be talking about that, but it's, uh, December the eleventh, two P.M., uh, the Christmas parade. Bart Walker had sent me a text about that, so I'm sure we'll all walk in it again this year if wanna, don't have to worry about Mr. Gillie putting kids' eyes out throwing candy. Uh, it's two o'clock on December the eleventh. All right. Seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned.